Okay, being five o'clock. Agenda review and disposition? Any changes, agenda, any changes, additions, et cetera?
No.
No, okay, great. So we'll start with privilege of the floor. This is a time where the public can speak and come on up and share some thoughts with us, and the board will continue on after that. So we welcome any thoughts, anyone would like to talk at this time. There will be a second one, too. Matt, come on up.
Yeah, where you want me to be?
Yeah, that's good.
I'm guessing that everybody in the video is, I'm not here, I know why you were here. You probably all know why I'm here. First, let me thank you all, as I did when I came here before, for being here to make the hard decisions. And I think usually when people show up here is because they've got something to complain about. And you probably don't hear a lot of praise. So thank you for doing what you do. Mr. Parsons, you and I have spoken frankly about how much I respect the way you run the school.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I mean every ounce of that.
I know you do.
I think everybody knows there was a situation on the girls' basketball team. And I heard when you were around town today that this was going to be an anti-trans meeting. At least, that's why I would be here. I would just like to personally state that that couldn't be heard from the truth. I want to express my concern and my sympathy for the young girl who's been thrust into the center of what could be considered controversy. It's certainly not fair to her at all, in any way, shape, or form. And like I said, I express my concern. But I said, while I am pro-trans, I'm also very pro-women's rights. And there starts to be a dichotomy between women's rights and trans rights. I would also like to express my concerns for the other girls that are also affected by concern about this situation. For whatever their reasons are, I think it's important that we support all members of the school and all of the community. I hope that we can be here not to complain, not to whine, but to have civil discourse about some solutions. Understanding full well that there are state laws that you're bound by, there are current school policies that are difficult to change. I read them, and I understand them. At the same time, I think we're, things are starting to come to an end around the controversy and the solution. Starting with just some problems recently that have been made, just been made evident to at least me as a parent. And let's just agree that this topic is controversial. Can we agree to that? This is a controversial topic, no matter where you stand on the issue. People agree, people disagree, and I think we, there's no doubt about that. There are people on both sides of the argument. Earlier this year, there was another controversial topic that was brought up here, and that's when the Bobcats for Life Club came out. And I'd like to just start by saying that I'm pro-choice. I'm a pro-choice individual. At the same time, I don't think that any of the high school students here at Plymouth Regional High School went into that club with the intent of taking away things from women and hurting women. I don't think that was their intent. I know some of them. I know actually at least one of you has a kid who's in that group in this room. I think they went in with the intent of giving rights and providing protections to babies. And if you take abortion out of the picture, and you just simply take a group of high school students here, and they are fighting for the lives and fighting for protection of babies, we could consider that to be an admirable event. If you add abortion in, and it becomes controversial because there's both, there's two sides. That's also a controversial topic. The trouble, though, is that your school safety and environmental policy prohibits the use of threatening, bullying, or intimidating behavior. And I sat with my daughter, who's also pro-choice. In fact, she came to me and called that this group even existed. But we also started looking at some of the posts that were made online and some of the things that were said. And those kids that were in that group were outed, their pictures were posted for all the world to see, and some very terrible and hurtful things were said about them. And while I don't agree with their cause, I sat there as a parent, and it almost brought me to tears trying to be in the other parents' shoes, watching the way these kids were cyberbullying. And their lives were definitely impacted. Controversial subject, gotta respect. On the other side of that coin, I just did a little walk around the hallway, and I know that there's a diversity club here fairly often. And I just looked at the bulletin board. There are some things that are right or wrong, other people would find controversial, other people might disagree with, whether it's religious beliefs, whether it's just that they're, whether they're jerks, I don't know. But you gotta believe that there are other people out there that disagree with the things that are on that bulletin board, at least some of them. But that group posts bulletin boards within community and speaks freely, as they should be able to, speak freely. So you take those two situations and the dichotomy of how one group voiced their opinion and was bullied, shunned, and persecuted by their peers, and another group speaks freely and openly about their beliefs. And that brings me to this situation. There are girls on the team, not my daughter, who are made to feel uncomfortable by this situation. There is a biological male in the locker room with these girls. They're told, according to the law, that if they're uncomfortable, they can go somewhere else, they can change elsewhere. Based on what we've seen with those two clubs and the way they were reacted to, I'm led to believe that they don't dare speak about this topic or about their discomfort. Her fear of being persecuted, cyberbullied, outed, and shamed, canceled if you will. In the 1800s, women were told to live with their being unhappy. Shut up, woman, deal with it. This is 2022, early 2023, and we have girls in this school who are afraid to speak their feelings and their beliefs because the school, and this is a solution I'm asking for, we need to find ways to allow students to speak freely and not feel persecuted and not, you're definitely not cyberbullying the way those, I can't, I disagree with their cause, but I watched what happened to them, and it was wrong. No matter who you are, it was wrong of women's treatment. And it's, like I said, it almost brought me to tears. I've got a wife who's an All-American athlete. I've got an older daughter who just completed, well, about four years of women's rugby. She played four years of NCAA of women's soccer. What do they say? Seven percent of high school athletes play college sports at all. Far fewer than that actually completed four years. My youngest daughter just accepted a scholarship, an athletic scholarship, to play softball in Miami. These are three strong women. Many of you know my wife and daughters, and they are not afraid to speak up for themselves. They are not afraid of taking on anything in their lives. But as I've watched my wife and daughters throughout my life with them, I've been educated. I've been educated on the struggles that women face every day. I know there's so many women in this, in this room. I can only speak to these, but I know that you've lived them. Let me just give you some examples. How many of you have watched a WNBA game? How many of you have watched an NBA game, basketball game? You can raise your hands, it's okay. Right? And I don't blame anybody. I would rather watch men's basketball than women's basketball. My daughter's a women's basketball player. It's exciting to watch. But let me just bring it into plenty. Every single Saturday is around the clock, on a home game anyway, we watch this hill, I believe it's right behind us, is it not? Get filled with members of this community, filled with members of this community, who have children here, who have children here, who never had a child here, men, women, adults, kids, that you're our boys and I'm playing football. Your boys play football. Yet, at a homecoming women's soccer game, you know who shows up? Moms and dads. Clearly, and I've seen several, several women's soccer games where it's just the moms and dads that show up. So there's a general lack of enthusiasm for women's sports, just community-wide. And I don't blame anybody for that, I understand it. But it's a female homecoming game, and then the only people to show up are your parents. It's gotta hurt a little bit. There's a general lack of importance placed on finding qualified coaches for female athletes. Case in point, my wife was asked by the former athletic director to be the JV soccer coach. My wife does not play soccer. She was not the best choice to develop these athletes. She was the easy choice to develop these athletes. And I can't imagine a situation where that would happen with the boys' football team or the boys' wrestling, where the easy choice would be the worst of all around the choice. Whether you're a female athlete or a female in general, can we all agree that sexism exists? It happens to girls. From a playground age to the time you die, sexism exists. There are wage gaps, there's lack of opportunities for advancement. We've all heard the glass ceiling, that place that as a female, you can see, you can touch, but you can't get through. 2022, how many presidents have we had? History lessons. Anybody know?
Always black.
How many of you have been women?
None.
Zero. Zero.
Close.
Our daughters, our daughters need to wake up every morning and worry about forgetting to take a birth control pill. Because our females, there's a difference, females are described differently than women. Our biological females are the ones that have to worry about getting pregnant, which is why I'm pro-choice, by the way. They're the ones that are gonna have to care about. The male, he's not an option. Hopefully, he does the right thing, but he's not an option. Our daughters don't.
Matt, I hate to cut you off, but you probably have a couple more minutes.
No, I'm going, I'm going on this.
Because we have a meeting to, we have a second time, too, to talk as well.
These girls have to deal with things that us, as males, biological males, we've never had to deal with. Menstrual cycles wreak havoc on a daughter, my daughter's daily lives. Those are the reasons that Title IX was developed. Let me just read you something from Title IX. First two paragraphs of Title IX, ready for this? "U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights and Forces, among other statutes, Title IX of the Education Amendments in 1972. Title IX protects people from discrimination based on sex in educational programs or activities that receive federal financial assistance." Paragraph two, "No person in the United States shall on the basis of sex be excluded from participation, yada, 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 in any school activity." Then you go to the American Medical Association, you go to the World Health Organization. That talks very clearly about sex, which is why, why Title IX was found. American Medical Association, sex and gender are not synonyms. Sex refers to biological differences between males and females. Gender refers to the continuum of complex psychosocial, self-perceptions, attitudes, expectations of people about members of both sexes. Even the terms female and male compared to man and woman are not interchangeable. American Medical Association. My daughter, Maggie Boyd, I'm not telling. My daughter Maggie Boyd was asked in seventh grade after the completion of middle school softball. This is a girl who's played softball in the state of Rhode Island, the New Hampshire United States Softball Association MVP for the state championship, played middle school softball, and was asked by the boys' baseball coach to play boys' baseball in eighth grade. Then you're so excited. Middle school softball is not Rhode Island softball, not state championship USA softball. She was excited to play, the pace of play, she was excited to play with fast pitching and with athletes. And then that cream roll ground, you know who her role? Principal Boyd.
Yeah, she's attacked.
Look, first of all, it's not fair to girls. They need Maggie, she's a leader. They need her on this team, she's good. Then she was told by the principal, and if I allow a girl to play, she takes playtime from the boys, there's gonna be hell to pay. Hell to pay. Now, if she'd simply uttered five words, "I identify as a boy," she'd play baseball.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I came in a little bit late. I'm really unclear on what your point is.
I'm sorry you came in like.
Other than, I've heard a biography of your family and your daughter and your wife.
Well, I'm sorry that you came in like.
I don't understand.
Lastly, I'm gonna tell you one more story. This is about a kid that I watched this summer with many of your children, who had cerebral palsy. Handsome, funny, weird, smart, college degree, all the characteristics that you would desire as a young boy. Interacting with our kids, and they were so nice to him. I was proud of our kids. But because of the cerebral palsy, his muscles were so concordant, his face was concordant, making sounds out of his mouth, very difficult to struggle to communicate. When you could kind of listen to him, you could hear the wit and the smartness and the intelligence coming out of this kid. But in that chaos with all of our kids, he didn't dare speak because he knew they wouldn't be able to understand him. You could watch this kid. All he wanted to do was just be a normal kid, to be able to have dates, have communication, to have, have, go out to parties with these kids, never gotten violent. It's all he wanted. There was not one thing. If he wants to identify as able-bodied, amen, I pray for you, thank you, excellent. But there's nothing he could do to identify his way out of cerebral palsy. Nothing. There's not a costume that he could put on, there's not makeup, there's not a dress, there's nothing that he could do to identify his way out of our palsy. Everybody in this room has grown up with something they don't like about themselves. Something they don't like about themselves. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Matt, I have to, it's been 15 minutes, and that's the law.
Yeah, you didn't tell me that in 15 minutes. This is what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna wrap up right here. What happens when somebody who's blind walks into the driver's ed room and says, "I identify as having a psychic?" Your rules state that you can't discriminate against genders. Can't happen. All I'm trying to say is that we, from this level, a state level, and a community level, I want this girl to be able to play sports. I want to be able to play sports. I want my daughters to be able to play sports. However, by a male body playing against a female, we've seen there are clear advantages, there's no argument there. So in the NCAA, with Leah Thomas, she forced an issue. They created solutions, multi-gender competitions. There's gotta be, the number of transgender people since 2015 to, or 16 to 21 doubled in the United States. This is happening. We need to provide solutions so that these people can play without taking opportunities and without taking accomplishments away from our female athletes. That's all I'm asking, is we as a community, fight to provide solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt, thank you. Okay, anyone else have anything they want to say? Yes, Sean.
My name is Troy Harris, and I am a major teacher here at the school. And my daughter's a senior. I've been at this school for 26 years. I have three children, they're part of the LGDCT+ community, two of them are transgender. You make the argument, a kid who has a physical disability can never be part of what they want to be part of. Let's take a look at these kids who suffer from gender dysphoria. I have a floor now, please. Sorry. They wake up every single day wondering, how am I gonna be? They come to this building wondering, how's everybody else gonna look at me? How are they gonna perceive me? I wanna go to a party, I wanna hang out with my friends, but I don't feel the same. It is a real thing. They go through counseling, they go through medication. You can't just wake up one day and say, "I'm transgender, that's what I want to be." Doesn't happen. You need medical guidance, you need parental guidance, and you need a safe space to be, and that's this building. If my kids didn't have this building to come to and this board that supported what they wanted to be, I don't know if they'd work that way. And I want to thank the board for doing that and to continue to support these kids. Because most of those kids have no other safe space to build.
This is a part of that civil discourse.
Thanks, I do. Next to Troy, I think, she was before you.
Okay, my name is Breanna Maris. I am a member of the girls' basketball team here. I personally never felt threatened by a transgender individual in school. I've never felt uncomfortable by that. Who I have felt uncomfortable by is people who openly say slurs, which I have heard and which have been directed at me for being it. I will say that. I will also say, in the locker room, I have heard derogatory terms towards transgender people. My question is, why does it matter to anyone in here what the genitalia of a person is? They are not being predatory for being in a locker room. They're not being predatory for wanting to play a sport of which they identify with. It's not predatory.
I don't suggest that they are.
Well, you just compare it to a child with a disability, it's not the same. Transgender people are not disabled, they're not mentally impaired or cognitively disabled. And that's how you just compare them. And again, I have never felt uncomfortable with someone in this school who identifies as a member of the LGDCT. I have felt uncomfortable by those people, who openly hate on those people. So, thank you.
I just want to remind those that are here tonight, this is not a conversation that goes on out there. You are talking to us, and that's how this goes, that's the law, that's how the meeting is conducted. So we're not having conversations amongst each other. Yes, you wanted to speak?
Yes, my name is Mike Alro. My child is transgender. This is the child that this gentleman is speaking about. So what I would like to do is that I think there's a significant eye and understanding about what it takes for that. And I would ask, I have a conversation close here, but just asking if people want to have a conversation about what it's like to have a kid in this community, whether they're gay, lesbian, whatever, any, any, any part of that. I'm offering the board, from myself and my wife, and for any, any kids who are part of the Diversity Club, anything, people like that, to have a session, a safe session for folks who don't understand certain aspects of what it is, what it takes to actually identify and actually have birth certificates changed and social security names and what that whole thing is about. Even having a child who skied at such a high level that the, was allowed to switch genders and the U.S. team allowed it. Because they're, and when you have that conversation, I can explain all of that, but just have an open environment, an open conversation rather than an echo chamber. I don't know how to do that, I'm offering it. So, Mr. Parsons, I'm here, and thank you all for the Diversity Club.
Thank you for that offer. Yes?
Hi. I don't know if I should go over there or just stand here. So I am a parent of three children, one freshman, a senior, and a student who graduated here in 20 months. I was very proud of, from a regional high school, it's been an amazing place. We actually moved to Camden specifically for this high school, and I have only been proud of it. My oldest is transgender and goes to UNH, wonderful student. One of the things that I think is, is critical that I want to share with Lauren is that I firmly believe that it is the responsibility of parents and schools to teach what is morally correct and non-discrepanient. And I think that one of those things, one of the fears that comes about from students and adults is based on lack of knowledge. As you were saying, a lot of that fear is, okay, I don't understand, I'm not comfortable. And that's where we come into play as parents and as educators. So I was looking at, you know, education, right, studies, research. So according to many studies, including in 2016, Human Rights Watch, study of over 35,000 people, it has mentioned, it has been stated in your own research that there's no evidence that allowing transgender students to choose bathroom or locker room facilities that correspond to their gender identity puts other students at risk. This isn't a guessing game. This is research and is experience. So it's the opposite. The results of the research illustrate why restricting the transgender students' access to shared spaces is not only unnecessary to put those limitations on, but it's discriminatory and it's dangerous. Lowering transgender students from facilities that are safe and comfortable and gender-affirming is discriminatory. Hold them back from that, it is discriminatory. And that discrimination causes severe harm to have transgender students. It's placing transgender students at heightened risk of harassment, assault, and bullying. And, and just like Breanna said, start seeing more of that if it's, if it's allowed at PRHS, it is not gonna allow it, and I have that, too. So this can also, if, if they did, call it, it was decided that there was some restriction for these transgender students, it can cause damage to their physical and emotional health. So none of us want our children to be in an unsavable environment, none of us. You know, we're all clear on that. Board, parents, all like that. The fears here, though, are based on discriminatory thinking, that anyone that is different is a danger to oneself. That is dangerous, dangerous thinking. And because of that dangerous thinking, it breeds connection, it breeds hate, it breeds discrimination, and can lead to violence. That's interesting, but it does happen. And that, as a, as a parent to which transgender student, that is one of my worst fears, in addition to the self-hate that can, it can breed, not feeling accepted, not feeling like they are human, just like everyone else. So let's teach our children that it isn't a blessing, everyone's interest, to embrace difference without fear and include friendship, embrace the difference. This isn't about sexism at all. I'm an IT female. I work in IT, I have fought the battle, I have been in a class in college where I was the only female. It's not about feminism, it's not about sexism. This is about knowledge, this is about education, and we actually have the opportunity to be clear, to teach students that just because someone's different and you're not comfortable right now, let's talk to you and teach you. What, what aren't you comfortable with, try to put yourself in their shoes, really knitting, and embrace that as a community.
Yes?
My name is Angie for Charity, I'm a parent in the community. And I really want to thank you for hearing these issues. The suicide rate for transgender teens is so high, it is enormously high. It's considered an epidemic. Transgender youth struggle with issues that our cis youth do not struggle with, they are different issues. I would also say that gender dysphoria is not a belief, it's a fact. It's, it's not something you believe in or you don't believe in. It's a we-is. Gender dysphoria exists. And transgender people don't choose to be transgender. They don't wake up and say, "You know what would be great, is if I tried a different gender?" No, it's, it's, it's part of them. It isn't a choice. They didn't choose this. But we, as a community, can do so much to support them. Last month, we Last month, we recognized at Kennesaw State University Transgender Day of Remembrance, where we say aloud the names of every transgender person that we know of who died by violence or died by suicide in the last year. And it's chilling, it's absolutely chilling to hear their names and to know that this didn't have to happen, it didn't have to be this way. So I just want to thank you all for hearing these issues and being willing to help keep our kids safe.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Carol Lee Simmons, um, and I've had the pleasure of being the advisor to the Students for Diversity group for the last 23 years. And I can't say enough about how proud I am of this school and the support that we have received. We initially went up to be approved for a club, many of you were not on this board, but we had to hold a public forum, which for many of those kids was a familiar thing. And they have come such a long way, and they feel so safe in this school because they know the administration has their back, they know that the teachers will support them and keep them safe. And I hope that we can continue to do that. And for your daughter, um, I was so proud of her for going out to try out for basketball. And I can't say enough about these kids, and they are just normal kids. And they just want opportunities to feel like, I'm okay the way I am. And we've been able to do that. And with Students for Diversity, we are actually in the process of planning a panel to invite the school community, teachers, faculty, and school board members to attend. The students will be running, so I hope you look, look for that announcement. But you're welcome to come and get educated. And part of the process of our group, if you didn't know it, was to educate our school community, not by getting in their face, but by particularly just giving them some facts. The facts about, the hard data about the kids and the consequences that they're willing to challenge just to be who they are.
Thank you. Okay, is that everyone? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, approval of the minutes, November 15th. Go ahead, our motion, Peter, seconded by Greg, all this paper? Opposed, abstaining.
Abstinent.
Okay, we have two abstinent, okay. All right, great, okay. Great, um, student report?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, I introduce Dash O., um, who's kind of filling for Kayden Stambone. He's got a very, very busy schedule, not that he does it. I know he's the guy. But Dash will be taking over the reins in the upcoming future. Dash, there are all you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Great to fill in for Kayden. Glad to hear you're supporting me and me. So yeah, so just what's going on around the school, winter sports started up. Um, so it's great to see everybody getting back into skiing, wrestling, basketball, all of that. Uh, last night, the music department put on our winter concert, that went great. Um, it was great to be able to use the silver setting, and we wanted to thank you guys here for that. Uh, we performed a musical, so Grease, uh, that was over the weekend of November 10th to the 12th. And that was a really fun performance. And then class trips were announced to the seniors and juniors. Um, so the seniors will be going to JCP. And then the juniors have a trip length for next year, um, going to Boston and to New York. For Quizville and Grand State Challenge, the PRHS Grand State Challenge team qualified to be on the show. The tapings in January, and we got the two seed for Grand State. Um, and Quizville is headed to Syracuse next weekend to participate in history pool. And then, uh, Saturday, PRHS is hosting the Vex Robotics State Tournament. Um, so there will be upwards of 20 schools here, and it's from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. In the Student Senate, I passed around earlier, um, a couple of proposals of changes to the dress code. There aren't really a lot of changes, really, the Student Senate looked at a lot of the semantics of the dress code and wanted to make it more uniform fitting. So we added some clarifying remarks. And really, the only two changes that we made was for sleeveless shirts with fabric on shoulders, so any spigot drops for tank tops. Um, we reduced the minimum three inches to one and a half inch. And revealing more than one inch below the armpit. And then we also included religious headgear, religious headgear to be allowed. So if a headgear level is a dog or a, uh, a vest fell in with any religion, that would be allowed in the school, just to make PRHS a more inclusive place. In addition, the Senate is planning on setting up a phone survey, um, about the phone policy just to get temperature with the school community and the teachers on how they feel the new, the effectiveness is of the phone policy. Again, not trying to make any changes to the phone policy, but rather trying to gauge, um, how effective the, the school community thinks the phone policy is. And then in addition, uh, the Senate is prepping for New Hampshire Youth and Government. So in, uh, on March 11th and then April 14th to the 15th, um, there are New Hampshire Youth and Government religious activities happening in the Student Senate. That's all I have, thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, uh, though I'm working with the Student Senate, so those proposals that Student Senate, they're working with the administration, we will be sending that along to the proper committee with the recommendation from the administration on those changes. So, and the, uh, survey that Dash is talking about with the phones, they wanted to survey the staff, that's not the students, the staff, uh, to see what their policies are with it. So a lot of teachers do use those phones within the curriculum. So they're getting a pulse on that. Nice job, Dash.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dash. Principals report?
Madam Chair, I, Dash, such a great job. I just wanted to send out, uh, I know Kyler passed out the fact book, and I want to give credit where credit is due, kudos to my administrative assistants, Janice, for getting that prepared for you as we move forward with the presentation of the budget, uh, which will help you along to see. So kudos, Janice, for that, and, uh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Great, committee report, progress reports.
We didn't have.
Yeah, we had that whole board meeting, right?
So one piece that I would like to talk about, um, after we review the budget, where you stand with that, if you want to make that, we had an issue, remember, with attendance at that December 20th. We had a meeting a week before the holiday break, and it was hard for everybody to attend. So I want to relook at either canceling that meeting, if you need to decide on the budget, maybe that's it, because the budget hearing is on, um, January 3rd, which is the first Tuesday, so it's coming up previously. So it's just something to think about as we move through each of it, if you want to switch that or not.
Okay.
I'll make a report, though, we have.
Thank you. So the next meeting's December 20th, but we'll possibly table that.
Yeah.
Discussion items, budget review.
So in front of you, we have the third, uh, budget, and really, you know, we'll get firmer numbers later in the process, just because, remember, according to your collective bargaining agreement, uh, up to December 1st, uh, staff can submit for draft changes. So it's just, you know, it's a little bit more accurate. I also handed out a sheet, uh, that told you the difference between draft one to draft two to draft three. So there was a few changes, everybody have that?
Yes, yeah.
All right. So the, the major changes are the, uh, staff changes and movements, so that's, that's more accurate, accurate. There was a change in the Sphere nursing contract that went up quite a bit, as you can see. And that is due to administrative costs that they've added into their contract. So that, I don't know, Dan, do you want to review that real quick, as far as why that came about and how it's been covered?
I can. So we were approached by Sphere a few weeks ago, and they took the position that they needed to add an additional oversight employee fully committed to oversight of the, uh, schools of SAU 48 not yet, which we, we pushed back a bit, suggesting that the contract that's been in place for a number of years provided for administrative oversight within the cost that were already established. And, um, asking them to reconsider, and also, if nothing else, delay this a year so that we could approach it from the beginning of the budget process, rather than fairly into the budget process. And the response we got was, you accept it or we're walking away. So that's the response we got from Sphere.
Is this just the high schools' share?
Yes. So to be clear, to be clear, they're adding a $90,000 layer of administration onto the burden of the schools of SAU 48. And when we pushed back, they said, hey, they'll leave it, if you leave it, we're walking away.
So.
And that's an email I got from their CFO. So we, we, we divide that cost pro rata amongst the student, over the schools, pro rata by student count. That's clear. So the 600 change students that are in this school over the total school student population, the SAU times that number, that's how we get that increase to the contract.
So it's something we can look at in the future, if we, as an SAU, want to move towards something else or something we stick with, but right now, I feel a little stuck because there's such a critical shortage of school nurses in the state, and their responsibilities have increased since COVID, to be quite honest. They're writing, uh, medical plans, they're writing, I mean, they're overseeing some 504 plans. Uh, they provide substitutes for us when they can, although it's not always available. Uh, they provide the professional development. Uh, so it's one line, it, it is a significant increase, um, but I think, you know, we can look at that or talk with them further to see if we can work out something a little bit more manageable.
Kyler, where, where, I guess where is the added administrative cost? Where, where is it coming from? Are they, is this being paid out to each school nurse that's working it, or is this?
No, if I may.
Yeah.
So their, their, their intent is to either repurpose an existing or hire a new employee whose exclusive role is oversight of the nurse that's filling the roles in the schools, whether it be administering their, whatever, I mean, I have a lengthy email behalf of, it's a public document, it's on my email system, right? So it's, it speaks to filling absenteeism, it speaks to, uh, professional development responsibilities, it speaks to a number of things that I felt, we felt, were already addressed in the responsibilities in the contract we've had in place for a number of years. But as I said, when we pushed back, we got a response I previously described.
How does that responsibility differ from a nurse that's working in, in the hospital versus a nurse that's working here? You know, I, I guess I'm not, I'm not, it kind of seems like a money grab. Can you, I mean, I got that, but.
You know.
Are there other resources we can go through to get school nurses?
I, I think that's worth an investigation, but that's my personal feeling, is that I take the wrench and use it right now.
Yeah, I'm sure, except that sounds a little fishy coming in this late a process.
Which is why we, it's, our first response was to say, hey, can you delay this a year? We're already fairly along in our budget process.
Yeah. And this is our community hospital that we rely on.
That was the first response, I said, it's a little late in the process to add this. But we're, we're a little stuck at this point, we really are. I mean, we're already, you know, looking at hiring pools, whether it be teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, whatever it may be, that are much smaller than they have been in the past. So we are trying to staff as much as we can, and even though the line is higher, you know, is it something that we just have to take and then figure out next year? Is this something, the direction we still want to move in? But it is, you know, our local hospital, I'm hoping we can collaborate with them, but.
Teamwork.
It is, it is a significant increase, and I knew it would be a difficult piece to try to sell to the, you know, our communities, especially at this point. So, that's that. The next piece is, is just the health industrial, there were just some enrollment, staff enrollment changes, so it's, it's just a natural reflection of the current faculty and staff. There's no other changes. So at this point, I know the board had asked me the last time to bring what the tax impact would be to each town, so, so Dan has that based on the current number right now. So I'm going to have to hand it over to Dan real quick, just to review.
I'm going to hand out two sheets that you're, um, familiar with, I think. The first one, it will be the current year's actual amount of taxes and sets for all our towns. And the second one is what the projection would be for next year based on the proposed budget in front of you, draft three.
I do not sign. It's, it's half way.
Thank you. So, in the interest of saving time, I can address it anyway. If you prefer, uh, we could start with, see the most relevant relative, start with the one at the top, it's titled 2324 Estimated Assessment. And every year, we have a rolling three-year average, for those who haven't been to the board, we have a rolling three-year average of the ADM or student population by town, as well as a rolling back three-year average of the equalized valuation. So those are the calculations that are on the top. What happens is the budget is 50% proportioned out based on ADM average, 50% proportion on towns' valuation. So as towns' valuations change, or student population change, the portion of the budget that is, is assessed to that town, or proportioned to that town, changes. If we drop to the bottom of the sheet, where it says 2023 estimated tax rate based on the net assessment that would occur after revenues, including adequacy, next year in the fall of 2023, based on the current year's valuation, we see that the 2023 tax rate by town for this school, after adequacy, would be, starting at the top, Ashland, 556, sorry, I gotta put my glasses.
558.
Thank you, 558. 567, Camden, 334, Holderness, 541, Plymouth, 543, Romney, 497, Thornton, and Wentworth, 349. Uh, the, the second to last, and last column show what that tax rate change would be with the budget as it's currently proposed to the town's tax rate to support the Penny Baker School District.
Any questions?
The same information as on the other sheet that you were handed first, showing this year's, um, actual tax rates for the Penny Baker District, this school specifically, uh, and versus last year's tax rates. I thought this was the most concise way of presenting it for you. I'm happy to take any questions that I'm capable of answering. I also prepared a draft warrant, if anyone wanted to review that.
Yeah, so we're going to just do the draft warrant, since we're going to move to the hearing anyways. It's pretty simple this year.
Why is Camden the only town that doesn't get any adequacy?
Uh, that's not, that's Holderness, Peter, sorry.
Oh.
That's Holderness.
Yeah, well, I don't care.
Okay, yeah. I, I will say, one of the things that's impacting this, this, this net portionment is the adequacy formula has changed dramatically, moving, it, it went up significantly this year. There are two things contributing to what you might consider a lower-than-typical tax rate this year. The first one being, there was a significant fund balance last year. So unspent funds from last year, a little over $500,000, uh, become a revenue this year to reduce the tax rate. And in addition, you had higher-than-typical adequacy this year because of the state legislature's, uh, machinations, if you will. And that has been eliminated for next year. So you have about a $250,000, $280,000, excuse me, drop in adequacy to the school district. You also don't have at this time any fund balance committed as a revenue for next year, and we can talk more about that as well.
So last year, Dan took you through the budget, and you committed at this point in December a certain amount of funds to the revenue side under the unreserved fund balance to kind of prevent it from the tax rate doing this. So I would suggest that maybe you consider doing that again now.
You have, if I may.
Yeah.
You have $307,000, 306,170, if you precise, that you retained in the form of retained fund balance at the end of the prior fiscal year. That 306,000 represents. That 306,000 represents approximately 21% of the increase that's portrayed with the current budget, the increase, so that 306 is 21%. The net increase to the towns is 1,441,000 as the budget's currently proposed after revenues. If you committed that 306,000 in your retained fund balance to be a revenue next fall, it would reduce this tax increase by 21%. Does that make sense?
Does that present a problem? Because in essence, you're raising the level of funds to be raised, but you're offsetting that with this excess, what I want to call excess revenue. But you've already raised the bar, so to speak. What happens when you don't have that excess revenue to offset that? Then the taxes will go up.
Barring maybe changing costs, yes.
Yeah, so are we looking, if that is a proposed solution to the problem, are we looking at the wrong solution as opposed to reducing the budget? And I don't, I apologize for missing, I was out of state for three weeks and missed the last two meetings on budget. But I guess, I don't know how much discussion has gone into, I couldn't tell from, I looked at the minutes, but how much discussion there was about where can we find ways to reduce that increase in the budget? Because with what you handed out tonight, I think it's 4.5%. And even our own goal speaks to the fact that we try to keep it at 3%.
Quite a huge cost, Phil, we're out of our control. That was what we were wedged in with. And then, of course, we asked to look at other line items. There were some shifting in position and there was, but it's one of those budgets, I feel, I looked at it for a couple of hours, I don't know, you just were against the wall. And I mean, I guess if you add that to reduce it, I mean, maybe next year it wouldn't be such a bigger, such a large increase. So at the end of the day, I see what you're saying, well, what about next year? It would be a million and a half, it would be a million and three quarters, but hopefully we're not going to be up against every year, I mean, it would be a crystal ball, you know, so we're going to be dealing with dental health increases, that kind of stuff. But that's out of our control. And anyone else you want to share, but that's how I feel about the budget right now.
Maury.
Yeah, wasn't there a position, a new position that we, that you had put forth, a new teacher that we hadn't had before?
There are two new programs. One is the additional CTE program. And the other one is the additional teacher to provide more electives to the kids, so the dance theater teacher.
And do you know right offhand what the cost is for each of those new programs?
If I may. The Yalta one will be approximately $155,000. That includes the salaries and the supply with it. The dance would, and the theater would just be the salary of the teacher that we hire would anywhere between, you know, 55 and 70,000.
We typically budget middle of the road for any new position.
But these are, as I stated before with the board, the previous meetings, these are to drive for the, we don't have the electives that we need to. When we went to the new schedule with the freshman seminar, now no longer, the Bobcat block is working just fine, but there, the number of electives that offered to individual students are very limited. So this would enable us to keep those kids out of study halls and into electives that they're looking at. Those are the two new positions, though, you're right.
What electives does it, just dance?
It includes, well, the dance includes the choreograph, introduction to theater, introduction to dramatic lit, tech theater one or two, a host of variety of issues that would go along with our art department. We only have three faculty now presently in the art. We used to have four at the time. But again, it opens the board, Greg, to students to allow, there's a couple of courses I'll be bringing to the board on the 20th, that they have no budgetary impact, but it's just courses that I can present to the kids that will get them more choices. But these two additional teachers provide those electives too.
And any position eliminations? No, you have a retirement.
And I didn't rehire, no.
And you're replacing, that was where I went.
Yeah, and Mrs. Welch, yeah, with the math changeover. No, we just, we kept, we didn't put that full position in, and I did not rehire, I mean, didn't put it in position for social studies because we had a retirement there.
So that could be less of an increase or more of a shift?
Yes, correct.
To meet the needs?
Yes, Maury.
You know how I feel about the arts and outdoor education. Is there, would it be prudent to hold those off for a year or is that not something that...
I wouldn't advise that, Maury. I just think it's a program we need to get started. I mean, the state, and the Yalta program, would be the only school in the state to have a program like that. And it's also going to be, I'm going to be able to use the Perkins funds too, to fund a lot of the programs on that.
Which is grant money.
Yes, it's the grant money. I think we'd just be kicking the can down the road. And I've already seen the one year with the number of students in study halls, which I have a concern with. And again, it's because we just don't offer enough electives here for these kids to take. So I'd rather see them in a class that can, they can benefit than in a study hall, both in A and B days.
Any other question, Phil?
It seems as though each year, due to the work a lot of people put into, we're able to come in and quote, under budget.
Yep.
In those areas where we have come in under budget, is there a possibility of looking at those areas to see if there's any way we, or have you already?
I could, Phil, but I think it would be gambling. I mean, you know, I've always, I've always been very conservative on, with Kyle and I putting that together. I know where you're going, you're a guy with special ed, but it would be gambling.
No, I know enough to know that special ed, you know, that's an issue. And speaking of the law, I mean, that, you get what you get, you got to play the hand you have.
But as you well know, I mean, with today's world, I mean, everything went up. The technology piece, we provide one-on-one computers for all these kids, the software programs that accompany with them have all gone up, our contracts with, you know, the HVAC, all that piece has gone up. I mean, so it's all built in there.
And I think, Phil, like, looking at the special ed services over time, the law has broadened even more where we're responsible, responsible for the, you know, charter schools, for the students that are pulled out of foster, that are in foster care, it's this district's responsibility. And the increase from the age from 21 to 22, which was a new law I reviewed through over the summer as well, so all those.
I'm not targeting special ed for Maury, believe me, I'm not. I just didn't know where we have seen savings, if you will, over the last couple of years. Is there a trend where we could look through that lens to see if there's any way that we could trim some of this because it's...
Not in the 1100 account, certainly not, you're right.
But unfortunately, you aren't going to reduce that percentage with buying two paper pencils. It's going to take something substantive to do.
Or I could get off cycle on athletic equipment and uniforms on there, which I would not recommend.
No, no.
You know what I mean? So, no, we'll look, when we do that, we know the actual we spent this year and what we're going to propose for next year, so.
Okay, so really the question is, do we want to move this budget forward? Do we want to take into account that, those revenues to lessen that amount? What are people thinking? Where are we at? Yes, Peter, first.
I really hate to see the budget, the tax rate go up and down due to any extra money we have, but this is a huge increase. This is over 4%. I'd be in favor of applying the money in the fund to reduce it.
To offset it.
Bernie.
I had to go back, that's what I was going to say as well.
All right, anyone else? So who would, let's, I guess I need to hear a motion from somebody. Are you making that motion, Peter?
Sure.
So are you...
I made the motion to apply the fund to reduce taxes.
And to accept this budget? Do, where?
I'll just make the, I'll just make the motion to reduce, apply the money to reduce the fund. I'll let someone else.
Can we do that when we haven't voted on a budget, though? We're kind of going...
Well, you can move, I mean, you can move to the change as far as the, applying the revenue piece in without, I mean, you could just have consensus on it, and then once you do that, you can vote on the entire budget, which includes that.
Okay.
All right, on the revenue side.
I would request that the motion be separate.
To separate.
Yeah, to commit, so if I were to sit on the board, I would, I would offer a motion to commit the FY22 fund balance of 306,178 to be a revenue in FY24, and that would satisfy all the oversight committees.
Makes sense. Okay, yes.
Yeah, quick question, Dan, about that. Do we, does that reserve, then, we still have a reserve? Or is that using up all our reserves?
That uses it up. And that, that's the entirety of the FY22 fund balance. The fund balance is something that accumulates, it's set at a legislative capacity cap each year. Last year you voted to retain the maximum amount available, which was calculated 306178. If there's unspent funds this year, they could be, and you'll have the opportunity to evaluate this in June when I come to you and report on the, this year's budget progress. You'll have the opportunity to either, if you, if you move forward with the motion that you're discussing, you will also have the opportunity in June to, if there's money left over, to retain additional, retain additional funds or release additional funds to add on to that 306178.
Yes.
Do you have any insights, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, in terms of what we should, what is your opinion as the finance county district on what we should, do you have an opinion on it or no?
No.
What are the drawbacks of applying the full, what's the worst case scenario if we apply the full amount?
I don't see a downside if, the only, I don't see a downside because ultimately, part one of why I don't see a downside is that I think this year's budget is in fine shape. You're not, running into a situation where this year's budget is going to be overspent or you're not going to have enough money to successfully complete the current year with the current budget. So my answer might be different if I were worried about that. If, and even if we were worried about that, and we wound up this year having eaten into that retained fund balance, the mechanics of it would be that we just wouldn't have as big of a revenue next year as we wanted.
Thank you. You answered my question without answering my question, I appreciate it.
Okay, all right, so.
I'm talking to a lawyer.
All right, any other questions?
So is that Peter's motion then?
Yeah, Peter, you want to identify that motion? You want to say?
As, as I said.
I wrote it down.
Yep. Can you read it back so I can see what I said?
To add the funds from the fiscal year '22, which is 306,178, to be a revenue in the 2023-24.
That was my intent.
Seconded by Bernie, I see a lot of nodding, okay. All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Okay, all right, so there's that. All right, next thing is the budget.
Yeah.
Any conversation questions, clarification? About the budget? No? Does someone want to make that motion about the budget?
To move it on?
Yeah, is that where we're at?
These changes? Is that what you said? We're just moving on.
The final draft? Well, I don't want to speak.
The appropriations.
Yeah, I don't want to make the motion.
What, Dan, how do you get money back? What does that do to overall bigger?
It's going to reduce, so I'm not looking at the 4% number on the sheets that we handed out that show the tax rate increased by town. It would reduce that by 20%. Does that make sense? Right now, the net, the net assessment is going up, 1.441 million dollars, and that number is going to be reduced. On the last page of your budget, the revenue page, you'll see a number, go to the budget, that was provided to you, the last page is the revenue page. At the very bottom of it, you see a number, 13737, 542, as the district assessment projected, right-hand, hollow in the bottom.
Yeah.
You with me?
Yeah.
That number is going to go down by 306,000.
I mean, if our limit core budget increases 3%, we ought to get tight to there with this 20%, wouldn't you think? I mean, in the early threes? I mean, my math's done in my head.
No, if you're four and a half, I haven't done the calculation that Peter already did. If you're at 4.5% now, it's going to, that's going to come down 20% of 4.5%. So about, you're going to be at about 3.6, 3.7.
All right, so more in the middle.
But the budget doesn't change.
No, that's a valid point as well. Your appropriation or your spending isn't changing.
The budget stays the same, it's still 4.5.
It's your assessment, right.
Right. So it's just offset, yeah.
Thank you, Phil.
No.
All right, so where are we at? Who wants to make, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. I'll make the motion to move this budget on.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining?
And then just real quick for the budget hearing, Bruce and I can review the summary of it unless one of the board members would like to do so, you kind of switch back and forth. I think last year we did, Peter, did you do it?
No, last year, Roger did it.
Roger did it, okay.
Whatever, I don't care. If you want me to do it, I'll do it. If you want to do it, you're probably better, you can do it. I mean, you guys spent the hours and hours and hours on this.
We can do it.
Okay, all right.
So we don't go line by line, we do the summary and I will do it, and then Bruce can chime in if I need him to.
Okay.
I might do it.
All right, any other business? And discussion items? Okay, great. Did anyone want to speak? We have one more privilege of the board that people did not speak. Well, it's not two increments of 15 minutes, right? One.
So we have to, 30 minutes is a minimum that the board has to have. You've had your 30, you've covered your 30 minutes, so you can allow additional people to speak if you would like.
Okay. Quick, quick, quick. We still have to go into non-public and have other things. So no one else has anything? Math, quick.
Yeah, I'd just like to restate what I said at the beginning. I certainly don't view the student as a danger. I know my daughter has no issue at all with this situation. She stands in paper of this situation. I embrace difference, and I actually applaud her, as I said at the beginning, for standing up and making a choice. I will say, though, that it's these policies, it's the state laws, it's the federal government, it's ignorant people in the community that have caused this situation. Our policies have put us in this uncomfortable situation. It's not comfortable for me, I'm sure it's terribly uncomfortable for her parents and her, and for the people who've spoken already, who said so eloquently things about the transgender community. I support the transgender community. I also support female athletes. We can do better for both. We can do better for both to create situations that are fair and equitable for all. And, you know, one person mentioned morals and, I mean, just the fact that we're all here speaking on something that we believe in speaks to our constitution, our background, our morals. But as I mentioned, my daughter's got an athletics scholarship. A full ride athletics scholarship can cost, I mean, that can cost the university upwards of a quarter of a million dollars. And I think we all know there are people out there without morals. And I think we all know that the male body, and this is scientific, this is science, the male body holds certain advantages over the female body that comes to athletics. And when you dangle a quarter of a million dollars out there in front of somebody who doesn't have morals, people not in this room, who doesn't have morals and has ill intent, that's more than enough for somebody to falsify their identity. And that puts this further out there, puts a divide between the two sides further out there. And I'm just saying as a community, there are things, I think... And I'm just saying, as a community, there are things, I think, as a state, as a country, that we can do so that nobody has to feel uncomfortable here. Nobody has, because, I mean, let's face it, there are people in this community that are fated and hateful when it comes to the trans community. And that's a tragic thing. And I support all of you who spoke tonight and all of you who sit back. But as I said, there's, if nothing changes, this is, it's not going away. We're not doing better for our trans students. We're not doing better for our female athletes who also have something at stake here. And we can do better. That's all I'm saying. And I just want everybody to know, and I know I'm not supposed to speak to you. I'm speaking to you. So, I'm gonna speak to you and say that I fully support the decisions that this girl has made, the stance that she has taken. I applaud her for bringing this to our attention, no different than Leah Thomas did. Wasn't comfortable for her. She brought it to the attention, and change occurred because of it. Change occurred that's gonna make things better for a transgender student in the NCAA. And I could be wrong. Maybe it's not better for a transgender student in the NCAA. But the conversation started, and I applaud her for bringing this to the table.
Thank you. Yes?
I would just like to say that as we're looking at this issue, I think it's really important to actually focus on facts, not on conjecture. And other than maybe the plot of a 1980 sitcom, I don't actually see instances out there in the news being reported of young people adopting a gender identity that isn't real so that they can get scholarships to colleges and universities. That isn't reality. That isn't what our students are experiencing. That isn't what young people are doing. Making policies and making choices based on that kind of fiction and myth isn't good administrative policy. It isn't ethical policy. It isn't good moral policy. It isn't good for our community. It isn't good for our students.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name's Stacy Wu. I have to admit that I didn't know what I was coming into tonight as my daughter said, hey, let's go to a school board meeting tonight. I would like to say that I was here over 20 years ago, as Ms. Simmons discussed, when there was that public hearing for the diversity group. And my brother was one of the students who came and was one of the, you know, students that began that. And she's right, that it was a very difficult meeting, and it was terrifying for those students. It was difficult for the parents, too, of the students who came here to create that group. And I think that this community has done a really good job at creating, you know, a welcoming and warm and accepting culture, which I think we should all be proud of over the last 12 years. Though I have to admit that some of the things I've kind of, you know, heard tonight were a lot of the things that I heard back then. Now, I'm a biologist, you know, graduated here, great science background, which I thank the school for over and over again. So, I understand one, biology, and how difficult it is to be in a male-dominated field sometimes. And I can talk all night long about how, you know, there is way more gender than an active S R Y gene. And we can talk all night about the science, and that's evolving, we're learning more about. But that's not really, I think, what we should be talking about. We should be talking about assisting marginalized students. And we're talking about a significant minority of children here and being here to support them. And why are there more, you know, children who are, you know, coming out as trans? It's because we're creating a community in which they feel comfortable and really revealing who they are themselves. So, I feel like we're kind of back to where we were 20-some-year ago by talking about a different marginalized group of students. And I hope that, you know, this community continues to be, you know, as accepting, understanding, and kind of move this situation forward so that we can better support the students that we have here, all of them. That's it.
Thank you. Yes?
I just wanted, I want to talk earlier, just, again, coming back to having a discussion. And I don't know, I'll reach out to the guidance counselors, Mr. Parsons, having that. And I'll explain why, because some of the words that would be, I don't know the name here, there's an opportunity for education using girl, trans, and choice and things like that. And just an education of what, how, what it takes to go from, you know, three years, to going from X to Y, not using, you know, that transition. There's a lot of opportunity for having a discussion. So, I'm happy to help out in doing and then participating in that. You have a lot of students here, which is amazing and fantastic that they're here and supporting, you know, each other. So, I don't know how we can go about doing that. But again, that's just an offer to try to have some, give you some improvements.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. All right, board member concerns, anybody? I just wanted to reach out to Will Gunn and say, nice job Saturday, and thank you for putting your weekend aside for the town-wide parade.
And Monday night, too.
In the rain, with instruments. Thank you, thank you. Okay, a motion to go into non-public for personnel should be made in its entirety. Yes, personnel, right, seconded by, okay, Christine, all those. I'm gonna do individual. Paul, Sam.
Yes. Thank you, yes.
Phil?
I'll call you tomorrow.
Motion to go into non-public?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's right, Peter.